This meeting of the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees was previously called to order. The presence of a quorum has been established. Meeting's been duly called and the notice of meeting has been posted in time and manner required. Monthly meetings of the Board are designed to conduct the business of governing the school system in public. However, this is not a meeting to interact with the public. We welcome you as guests to observe and to listen, and we do have scheduled time within the agenda for public comment. First item on our session, on our meeting, is the prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we love you. We thank you for your blessings. We thank you for the opportunity to gather here today and represent our community. May everything we do begin with your inspiration and continue with your guidance. We come to you today asking for wisdom and understanding. Please fill us with your grace as we make decisions that affect our students, teachers, and community. Lord, I ask that you help us to be models for our children and students. May they see us as loving and forgiving, peaceful and just, compassionate and generous, and full of hope. May our time together unite us in our vision, strengthen our purpose, and be inspired by the dreams we have for our schools. And please allow our words and actions to reflect your message. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
To the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our command, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas way, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
We do have action coming out of executive session under item B. Do I have a motion?
Mr. President, I move we adopt the recommendation of the superintendent and propose the termination of the employment contract of Kayla Wright.
Any questions or comments on that?
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion carries. Seven special recognitions.
Good evening, Board members and Dr. Crawford. Tonight, we'd like to begin our recognitions by announcing our January Students of the Month. Gabby Perdomo is the Elementary Student of the Month, and she is a fifth grader at Bell Elementary School. The Secondary Student of the Month is Evan Massey, and he is a sixth grader at Moore MST Magnet School. At this time, please join me in watching a brief video about these two outstanding students.
Tyler ISD would like to recognize the efforts of our two district Students of the Month. These students are selected based on six criteria: academic performance, effort, character, behavior, citizenship, and attendance. We would like to recognize Gabby Perdomo, a fifth grade student at Bell Elementary School, as our Elementary Student of the Month. Gabby understands what it takes to be Student of the Month.
You have to be able to ask for help because if you don't, you won't be able to be a good student because you're not giving your best effort and you're scared of taking responsible risks.
Gabby says her favorite classes are math and science. She also participates in UIL art and district honors choir. Gabby says she uses her leader in me skills to help broadcast the school's morning announcement.
So in the morning, I get there and I set the microphones up and the camera and start it and then just record and put it into a file to save. It helps me become more of a leader to set an example for younger students.
Gabby knows what she wants to be when she grows up. She has an eye on her future.
I want to be an optometrist or an ophthalmologist because I just love the study of eyes and how they're so sophisticated.
Our Secondary Student of the Month is Evan Massey. He is a sixth grade student at Moore MST Magnet School, and he loves his class.
Overall, at the end of the six weeks, we're supposed to be making a safe train system, so like the railroad crossing and the barrier. And so we're making it so when the trains go into their station, that we have a safe turntable that turns right and it doesn't have any jams or it doesn't go too far or something like that. So that's what we're doing right now. But overall, we're supposed to be making a whole train track, which we will be able to have a train and it will be able to stop safely and turn around safely.
Evan is very involved both in and out of the classroom. He is taking pre-AP classes and is on the UIL chess team. He is also planning his future career options.
When I was in fourth grade, I went into it, so I actually started thinking about my shoes because I thought they looked really cool. And so I thought, I guess, I think I can make my own shoes. And so I started making ideas, and then it just took off from there. Now I have over 50 designs maybe.
Evan enjoys being a Moore Mustang and thrives in the school's Mustang synergy.
Mustang synergy is, well, synthesize and synergy are the same word when two things combine to make one big idea or thing. And so we're combining actually three things, sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade, to make one big thing. So it's Mustang country, and so we have three, so we have three different ideas and making it one big idea, so everybody's a Moore Mustang.
Congratulations to these students for their hard work, dedication, and leadership in the classroom. Their efforts are being recognized through TISD TV and sponsorship by Christus Trinity Mother Francis Health System.
Okay, and I would, Board members, I would like to introduce you to Gabby Perdomo, our He's a senior at Robert E. Lee High School, and he's been selected to the 2019 Texas Elementary Student of the Month. Gabby, please come forward. All-State Jazz Ensemble. Homer's a member of the Robert E. Lee Jazz Ensemble, and he will perform with the Texas All-State Jazz Ensemble in San Antonio in February. He was chosen for this prestigious honor through a competitive process held across the state at district, region, and area levels, and we are so proud of him and ask that he come forward at this time. Congratulations to Andrea Vasquez, a senior at John Tyler High School, and Cami Ferrantino, Evan, please come forward. a senior at Robert E. Lee High School. Both of these ladies have been selected as All-State dancers. They were afforded the opportunity to travel to the Texas State Dance Educators Association. They took classes from master dance teachers and choreographers from around the country and performed at the state convention. Congratulations, ladies. And finally tonight, we would like to congratulate our January Teacher of the Month, and that's Ms. Hannah Leonard. She's from Owens Elementary School. She's a fourth grade math and science teacher, and this is her first year as a teacher, so we're very excited to recognize her. Please come forward, Ms. Leonard.
Next is item eight, the approval of the minutes. We have the meeting minutes from December 6th and December 17th for review. Do I have any questions or comments? If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. President, I move we approve the minutes for December 6th and December 17th, 2018.
Thank you, Reverend Mason.
Second emotion.
Eager beavers tonight. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Keep us moving along. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion carries. Moves to our action item, the approval of the annual audit, which I believe we have a presentation prior to taking action.
Yes.
Ready for media. Okay. Well, good evening. My name is Bob Roseman. I'm a partner with Prothro Wilhelm and Company, and we have had the pleasure and honor to be your auditors for the fiscal year ended August 31st, 2018. And I have with me Josh Olney, our audit supervisor who conducted the audit for our firm, and then my partner, founding partner of our firm, Tom Prothro.
Did you say your other?
Yeah, my much younger partner, who if we have the privilege of being your auditor again, will rotate in to be the partner in charge of the audit from this point forward. And he is no stranger to TISD, who in the past, only a few years ago, has been sitting where I'm sitting to present the audit for you. And in fact, I think Tasha Bjork worked with him as the auditor instead of the CFO at that time, so.
And he's a Robert E. Lee graduate, too, if we want to go way back.
That's right. And.
Well, now let me add my little bit in, and we're a Leadership Tyler class, too.
Yeah, Leadership Tyler class. Yeah, he was on the state, what do you, state qualifying team for Robert E. Lee in golf. So second in the state, so anyway.
Very nice.
Much more qualified representative than me to be your partner in charge. But anyway, wanted Tom to come with us. And to the, to the business at hand, it is always a pleasure to come before you because every year we've been able to do your audit. It's just been a wonderful experience, and this year was no exception to that. Finance team led by Tasha, audit, internal auditor Jan Coker, Mary Russell, all of the administration, Dr. Crawford, and everyone has been so courteous to, to work with us, and it's been a pleasure. The audit was conducted smoothly, on time. Information we needed was delivered on time, and most importantly, our audit came with no, no discovered irregularities, and our opinion for the audit is unmodified, which is the unqualified opinion that you want, and so we're pleased to report that to you. And just as a highlight, if you've looked at these financial statements, when you, when you take the financial statements and you roll them all together, we had a rather large implementation this year of a new audit accounting standard, which is, we call it Government Accounting Standard Number 75, which required the recognition of the liability related to other post-employment benefits, which is conducted by the retirement system in the state of Texas, but they feel it's important that school districts and reflect, or governments reflect obligations related to post-employment benefits. So it made a rather large adjustment on the financial statements, not just for TISD, but all the school districts across the state and other governments in that regard. In, in your case, it was a hundred and, almost $103 million to the government-wide financial statements. The adjustment, while being large, is reflective of obligations, and we understand that, and we think that there's, there's wisdom in that, but it does make for a, a large item to consider when you're reviewing the financial statements. I believe that your finance team has done an excellent job of discussing that matter in your management's discussion and analysis to these financial statements, and I was very impressed with the way they laid it out and explained some differences between what it would be like without that adjustment, and so you can understand the way things went on a normalized basis year over year, and they've been very, very positive. Your general fund decreased slightly by $3 million year over year. That's primarily related to the expenditures that you've done on your capital spending program with the school building, and that's to be, you know, continued in this current fiscal year in a, in a greater level, but, but that, that was understood and that was expected, but you still are left with a good general fund balance of $38 million on a government-wide basis. It's still very strong and healthy even after the large adjustment, and so I think you should be very pleased in that regard. I'll turn it over to Josh and allow him to discuss other opinions that we've expressed as part of the financial statements.
Hi, just want to say thank you for allowing me to lead the audit this year. It was a very good experience and got to work with a lot of great people during the audit. Want to go over a couple items in the, towards the end of the financial statements. We have two reports back there, and I just want to discuss those reports really quickly. Our first is the Independent Auditor's Report on Internal Control Over Financial Reporting and on Compliance and Other Matters Based on an Audit of Financial Statements Reformed in accordance with Government Auditing Standards. Now, there's two types of findings with this report. There can be material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. I'm happy to say that we did not have any of those findings, and so we believe that in all material respects, that there's no matters for us to report. The next report I'd like to talk about is the Independent Auditor's Report on Compliance for Each Major Program and on Internal Control Over Compliance Required by Uniform Guidance. This is what's considered the single audit report, and in our opinion, the district complied in all material respects with the types of compliance requirements referred to that could have a direct and material effect on each of its major federal programs for the year ended August 31st, 2018. In addition, we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control over compliance with the district's major federal programs. The programs we audited were the Special Education Cluster, or IDEA, Title II Part A, Supporting Effective Instruction, and also the Head Start Program.
So that's, that's our report to you. If you all have any questions, we'll be happy to answer those at this time.
Any questions or comments, particularly from the audit committee?
It is always our pleasure to work with Prothro Wilhelm and Company, and of course, you know how much we appreciate the work of Tasha Bjork and Jan Coker and what is done here to protect our district and to show to our citizens that we are being fiscally conservative with the funds they entrust to our keeping. So as always, we appreciate the work that they do and looking forward to continued service from them.
Bob, just a, maybe some commentary as it relates to fund balance. Pretty important year this year in the legislature, and looks like that there's going to be some adjustments made in the formulas and how funds are distributed, how they're collected locally, with a boost, maybe teacher pay, maybe incentive compensation as well for outcomes, improved outcomes. But in saying that, there's also another initiative to buy down the property taxes and make adjustments on caps and whatnot. Just saying, and nothing's, it's so early right now, you can't say it. In your opinion, if we were to go to something where we looked at current year values as opposed to previous year values, as far as how we determine that, and it does look like there may be a gap year or two in our budget as we try to recalibrate, it's not just Tyler, it's statewide. Do you believe in our fund balance that there's enough in there to cover any type of adjustment from the legislature? Now, they're saying they're going to make it whole. I just don't know how that's going to happen. Let's just say that doesn't happen. You feel confident that we've worked hard on our fund balance to be able to, to still maintain a healthy operational program here?
Well, thank you for the question. I mean, who knows what the legislature's going to do and how much of an impact it may make on you, but we certainly understand that it could create some gaps in financing over a period of time, and, you know, it's, it's top of their mind, I know, and I know it's top of your mind on how it may impact you and how you fund the responsibilities that you have to the district and, most importantly, to the students and the community. I, I can say that, that, that your district has exercised great financial responsibility such that you've built a healthy balance that affords you the opportunity to have the discretion to even if necessary, reassign some of your assigned balance if you need to, to do things such as that. And so I think you have great latitude in that, depending on how aggressive they get on some of the things they may do, but I think that, you know, for a short period of time, you've, you've built up the opportunity to absorb some things over a short period of time. Hopefully, it would not have to be too much.
Yeah, we hope not.
Yeah.
You know, because we've done some capital out of fund balance over the years on some non-instructional facilities, and I know there's been some community comments in regard to that, but again, fund balance is for emergency situations here, and again, your verification or validation that we still, even after doing those capital projects, do fund balance. I don't have to list those for you, do I? Okay. Non-instructional facilities, that we're still in good shape fund balance-wise to withstand any recalibration of the formulas. Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome.
You have questions? The $103 million, so that's technically not an obligation of the school district, just something the legislature mandated that we report. Is that correct?
Well, it, it in part is an obligation. As you know, every year you have your, your share of funding to the retirement program, but fortunately, it does go into the state's hands for them to administer all the post-retirement benefits, so the future responsibility rests with the state, but clearly, it's a cooperative effort between all of the, all of the districts and the state. But, so there's a part, but, but you're basically funding an escrow or a, you know, a fund.
We're funding based off our current employees, not past employees.
That is correct. But it's, it's, it's informational. It's helpful to know what the district's share is, so.
Kind of gets it off the state's books and on to ours.
Yeah, that's.
There you go. They didn't want to encumber that, even though the teacher retirement system of Texas is managed at the state level, so they've passed it back. We've played some tennis with it. It's back in our court now for us to put it on our books.
Okay, if there are no other questions or comments, then I would accept a motion to accept the annual audit.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board approves the audit for 2017, 2018 fiscal year as submitted by Prothro Wilhelm and Company, and that a copy of the audit report be provided.
Do I have a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Martinez, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for.
Thank you.
Helping us be good stewards of taxpayer resources.
Happy to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10, continuous improvement in student outcomes. We have three separate updates. Dr. Crawford?
Yeah, what gets measured, gets improved. I keep hearing that coming out of Austin these days from some of our friends down there. So as Coach Priest makes his way up to the, to the microphone, we'll have an athletic update on, you know, continuous improvement in student outcomes. It isn't just academic data, and that does take up 90%, 95% of our efforts here, but we also have some front porch initiatives, the Tyler community values, the East Texas community values, and the Texas values, and athletics and fine arts and competitive academics are some of those things that we want to get better at, and we're here to give you a fall athletics update. Coach Priest?
Well, it's my pleasure to come before the board tonight to give the fall update. This will be for all the sports that have finished their seasons up to this date. You know, it's about a year ago, probably about this time, that Sandy Newton introduced the video, so, and it was born. So we have a video presentation. Thanks to our friends at Tyler ISD, TISD TV, they presented a video for you, and that's what we'll go through, and then a, and then a quick little PowerPoint for you, so.
Welcome to the Tyler ISD Athletics Fall Update. Lots of great success stories happened on both campuses this fall, so here's a recap of how Tyler ISD finished in these sports. For the John Tyler Lions, the football team finished first in district and advanced to the regional semifinals, eventually losing to Highland Park in the quarterfinals. The girls volleyball team finished fourth in district, advancing to the playoffs, but losing in by district to Texas High. Team tennis at John Tyler also finished in fourth, advanced to the playoffs, losing eventually in by district to Texas High. Cross-country girls finished in sixth place, and cross-country boys finished seventh in district. Over at Tyler Lee, the Red Raiders, the cross-country boys finished first in district, advancing to the regional meet. Hafte Knight finished second at the regional meet and fourth at the state meet. Team tennis also finished first in district. They advanced as area champions, eventually losing to Allen in the regional semifinals. The cross-country girls finished second place, advancing to the regional meet. Girls volleyball finished fourth, advancing to the playoffs, but losing in by district to Waco Midway. And in football, finished sixth in district. There were several early college signings. For the Lions in football, Chance Billington signed a letter of intent to the University of Louisiana at Monroe. Keandre Strebe signed with the University of Houston, and Jabrilen Yarber to Northwestern State University. For the Tyler Lee Red Raiders in football, Bo Limer will be headed to the University of Arkansas. In cross-country boys, Hafte Knight will be going to the University of Texas at Austin. And finally, in girls soccer, Carly White will be headed to the University of Alabama. The Tyler ISD initiated a new water safety program. Here's Tyler ISD Aquatic Center Coordinator and swimming coach Jason Petty talking about the first year of this program.
The purpose of the program was to introduce kids to.
The girls volleyball team finished fourth in district, advancing to the playoffs, but losing in by district to Texas High. Team tennis at John Tyler also finished in fourth, advanced to the playoffs, losing eventually in by district to Texas High. Cross-country girls finished in sixth place, and cross-country boys finished seventh in district. Over at Tyler Lee, the Red Raiders, the cross-country boys finished first in district, advancing to the regional meet. Hofft Tonight finished second at the regional meet and fourth at the state meet. Team tennis also finished first in district. They advanced as area champions, eventually losing to Allen in the regional semifinals. The cross-country girls finished second place, advancing to the regional meet. Girls volleyball finished fourth, advancing to the playoffs, but losing in by district to Waco Midway. And in football, finished sixth in district. There were several early college signings. For the Lions in football, Chance Billington signed a letter of intent to the University of Louisiana at Monroe. Keandre Streep signed with the University of Houston. And Jabrilen Yarber to Northwestern State University. For the Tyler Lee Red Raiders in football, Bo Limer will be headed to the University of Arkansas. In cross-country boys, Hofft Tonight will be going to the University of Texas at Austin. And finally, in girls soccer, Carly White will be headed to the University of Alabama. The Tyler ISD initiated a new water safety program. Here's Tyler ISD Aquatic Center Coordinator and Swimming Coach Jason Petty talking about the first year of this program.
The purpose of the program was to introduce kids to just the idea of what it means to be safe in and around the water, whether it be a pool, a pond, a lake, so that they would hopefully be safe anytime they are around a pool or a body of water and be respectful of it. But at the same time, we want them to feel comfortable because it's a great opportunity for exercise, recreation. We want to get kids more involved with the sport of swimming if they haven't had swim lessons and things like that. So this was the trial run. We decided to do it the first week of October, and we had two schools that volunteered to participate, Rice and Douglas. And both schools had about 30 to 35 students. On any given day, we ran from Monday through Thursday, and they would come over to the pool for about an hour or so. And I would say the success was just the smiles on the kids' faces. They were having a great time. I felt like they got a lot out of it, just in that short one-week period. Everything that we kinda put together worked out really well.
And finally, some of our great Tyler ISD coaches give a recap of their successful season, as well as comments about their program.
You know, I think we have a really strong boys tennis team. We have some senior leaders at the top. We also have some young kids coming up, so they're able to see the example of, you know, the older boys. All of our guys are very athletic, you know, they can move, they can hit, and they've done a good job being coachable this year. And girls likewise, we have four senior girls at the top of the lineup that do a great job for us. A lot of our underclassmen girls look up to them. They show good character by, you know, being on the court, working hard, you know, being respectful, and implementing the things that we've been working on in practice. So a good group of boys and girls. And that's what you hope for as a coach, that, you know, the kids are taking what they're learning in tennis and implementing it in the classroom, you know, and in life.
Boys cross-country, on the boys' side, we won the district championship. And Hofft Tonight, this was his fourth straight district championship, individual championship. He's qualified for the state cross-country meet all four years, and this year, he finished fourth, which backed up a third-place finish last year. The girls had a great season. We finished runner-up to Rockwall the last four years, but each year, that's our goal to win the district championship. They also qualified for the regional meet, so we had a very solid season. Next year, we'll have four athletes currently running in college. We have a runner at Rice, one at West Point, University of Texas, and UT Tyler. So I'm very proud of the fact that the athletes are not only excelling in high school, they're going on and being, contributing at the college level.
First thing first, great senior class, great leadership, kids that I love coming to be at practice with every day, watching them get better, watching them mature. They're one of my other classes that I've seen go through the program all four years, from a freshman to the senior year. Couldn't be more proud of, couldn't be more proud of. Had great success this year, and their success had to do with the senior class, and they left a great example to the underclassmen on what to do and how to do it, and the things to do to be successful, you know, to be consistent and to be that John Tyler football program that has great tradition. Here at John Tyler, man, it's about life lesson. Yes, we teach them football, we teach them how to win and get better at different positions, but at the end of the day, we're trying to get them ready for life and not just winning a football game, but winning the life.
Thank you to everyone, student athletes, coaches, support organizations, and administration who made Tyler ISD a season of success.
Well, I just want to thank TIC TV and our coaches and everybody for putting that on, so I think they did a great job. And not only that, but, you know, this year at the football stadium, we put in the new video board and actually had a lot of students, as you see tonight, that are running the cameras tonight, and they actually helped out at the football games. And so we're trying to implement that into our new curriculum at the stadium, so I want to thank those guys for all their hard work this year. As we kind of move along, I've got, just, I'll try to go through this really quick. I know some of it may be a little redundant, so I want to kind of get past, kind of get through some of those things. But on the first page, I just kind of listed, you know, football for John Tyler. You know, as I said, you know, the district champions and regional champions. Had a tough loss to Highland Park in that one game. I feel like if we could get past that one, I think we've got a great shot of winning it. But, you know, those things happen, as kind of the New Orleans Saints kind of find out. Not only does it happen in high school football, but it also happens in the NFL, so, you know, it's tough breaks. All-district players, there were two superlatives. They had 14 first-team all-district players, five second-team, and 14 honorable mentions. Then I listed your numbers of participation. You know, we're staying pretty steady. You know, Coach Holmes carries about 48 players. On the JV, we kind of dropped down on the JV. They only had 32 this year, but the freshmen did increase. So we're down about 17 kids in football, but I think the numbers are kind of staying steady there. We're trying to improve our middle schools and get those numbers up to keep that going. At Lee, sixth place, all-district, we have one superlative, had, you know, freshman, really good freshman player, two first-team all-district, seven second-team, and seven honorable mention. As far as numbers compared to last year, 271. You can kind of see the numbers across there, so that's an increase of 11. So, you know, we're trying to get those numbers up, and so we're going in the right direction there. On the backside, on the next page, you've got volleyball. You know, John Tyler finished fourth, made it to by district. So, you know, being able to come up from 5A, as you can see, you know, John Tyler being able to win the district last year in football, and then this year, you know, well, last year in volleyball. You know, John Tyler really struggled in volleyball. It's just, it's a tough district in 6A, and then being able to come in and have some success. So it's great to see, being able to finish fourth, and we actually, you know, had a chance to get up as far as second. And so Coach Dara did a great job this year making the playoffs, and so that was exciting to see. She had three first-team all-district players, two second teams, and seven honorable mention. Numbers are going to stay pretty much consistent in volleyball. So, you know, we're up, I think, three people, 58 total. At Lee, finished fourth place, by district qualifier, two first-team, two second-team, and four honorable mentions, and the numbers pretty much stayed the same there. So we're staying pretty consistent with volleyball. And cross-country, you know, seventh-place finish on the boys at John Tyler, sixth-place on the girls. We're really trying to work hard to try to improve that and get, just get more kids involved. And as you'll see a little bit in here in a couple pages, as far as some things that we have that will hopefully help, you know, boys, 11-6-8 champions, Hofft Tonight, we're sure gonna miss him. He's been a great, had a great career here, and, you know, but it's gonna be exciting to see that guy go and run at the University of Texas. But one good thing, he's got some siblings, and they are coming, so they're coming, so we're ready to see them. Girls, second place, we've got a pretty solid group, and so we have some kids coming up through there, so it's gonna be exciting to see cross-country. Team tennis, John Tyler finished fourth. You know, they battled in 6A and finished right around fifth each year. You know, Coach Sizemore did a great job really establishing that program, and then we've got Coach Quinones that came in and really did a good job this year. But this is the first year, although John Tyler has made it as a team, made it to the playoffs, this is the first year, this is the first time they've made it in a little lower 10 years, but it's the first time they've actually earned the berth. And before, there were only four teams in there, and they advanced because of the number of teams. This is the first time that they've been able to advance on their own play. So that was great to see, and that program has continued to excel. And then, you know, Lee Tennis won another district championship, was area champion, lost to Allen, and, you know, that's just continuing to go. So we've got a good, solid group in tennis. On the next page, you've got the Lone Star Cup standings, and this is as of, you know, January 11th, and this, you can see what sports that includes, but, you know, it's, you know, last year, when we sit here, it's 6A for John Tyler, and we didn't have, you know, the points were lacking there. As you can see right now for John Tyler in 5A, they pick up two points in team tennis, two in volleyball, and they got 10 in football, 14 points. So they're ranked 35th out of 253 schools. So that's a good improvement. You know, I think we'll pick up some more points in the spring, and so that is very encouraging. So, I mean, I'm liking the 5A for them, so it's really good. 6A, Lee, you know, the team tennis picked up six points, and volleyball picked up two, so, you know, total of eight points right now, so 88 out of 255 schools. So, you know, I'm sure we're gonna pick up some more in the fall, in the spring, and so we'll see. I'll have that in our next update. Just want to cover middle school athletics here. You know, I've got, what I did was I just wanted to list out kind of our numbers of kind of where we are in the participation numbers, because, you know, that's our lifeblood, and we really need great participation in that. And so, you know, although these numbers, you know, with us losing Dogan and then doing some of the things that we did at HOG, making that available where they could go to other schools, so we're gonna see a drop right now in some of our numbers. But in 2017, in volleyball, we had 319 participants, and this year, 257, so a drop of 62. But, you know, all of our schools filled it full teams, so we're getting there. I mean, it'll continue. As far as football, you know, in 2017, we had 584 players. This year, 474, so a drop in 110. But our numbers are pretty stable as far as at the schools that we have. We have made adjustments for HOG, anybody that's at HOG to be able to go within your attendance zone, they could go to a school that's in the same attendance zone as their high school. And we've had a few take advantage of it, especially in football and basketball. We really didn't have anybody to come over in volleyball, but they are taking advantage of the other sports, and I think some are gonna run track. But HOG will have soccer, so that's a little difference right there. Over on the next page, as far as swimming, this is one, we've got a total of 59 student athletes that are taking advantage of the middle school swim. Last year, last year we counted, or this year we had 52, last year we had 59. And last year, sixth graders were counted in that number. So we are not allowing sixth graders, because it can only be seventh and eighth graders, so that's a little bit of excuse. So our numbers are actually okay, but the majority of those were from three lakes. There was a lot of sixth graders that took advantage of that, being able to get in there that one year. So right now, our numbers in swim, 52 for the middle schools. Trying to get some kids from Boulter. We really want to try to get that. We did have a couple of kids from HOG, which was good, but we really got to try to make a push or try to get some kids at Boulter interested in swim. As far as cross-country, you know, we've, this is our third year for cross-country, and this is, I think, where you're gonna see some help from, to our high schools. Last year at this time, and this was, I didn't have the breakdown, but we had about 60 kids participate in cross-country. This year right now, we had 101. And so that's a big sport that kids are interested in. We put them in four meets, and so that's a growing one. One that we added this year, it's not really gonna be a competitive team, they are gonna put some meets together, but we started middle school tennis, of being able to bring them over during the athletic period. There's 92 kids, and every school is participating in it. As you can kind of see the numbers of who's coming, but we've got kids from HOG, kids from Boulter. It was great to see them. They had eight kids that came out for tennis, so I was really, you know, trying to get those kids interested in it, because what Coach Sizemore and the kids and the coaches in the past, they've had to take those kids at freshman year and try to get them interested. So trying to bring those kids up from freshman, you know, and seventh and eighth grade, so that'd be good. We're really excited about adding those sports. Just a couple of quick updates, real quick on this one. Tyler Rose Aquatic Club, last year, we had 106 members. There were 68 students and 38 masters. As far as right now, we have 95 members, 58 students, and 37 people in the masters program. We started a, at all of our schools, we started an after-school meal program, which has been great for our kids, and we do that through Be a Champion. So it's an afternoon after-school program, we're all kids, and it's open to everybody that can come and get a meal before they go home. So, and we've been doing that in, well, for athletics, but then they've kind of expanded it where it's pretty much for all kids. So that's, and that's at our high schools and all of our middle schools. So that's been a really positive deal for us, trying to get those kids food when they go home, so we're for sure that they're gonna have a meal. Playoff games, we hosted four playoff games, which is about the max we could really kind of host. We hosted pretty much every weekend. We did host, the state champion Grandview played, and the state runner-up was Malikoff. You know, and a lot of that is just geographics. It's just kind of luck of the draw. We were in a lot of games, we could've had a lot of big games from Longview to Carthage to Midlothian Heritage, but we just lost the flip. So, but people are excited about Rose Stadium, and we'll continue to get playoff games there and being able to use that. So that is our update for the fall. I will add that we did just finish up, we did have the district meet for tennis, and we had a great showing there. Both teams finished third, but we'll address, oh, sorry, swing, we'll address that in the next update. So that is our update for athletics. If anybody has any questions, we'll take those.
Or do you have questions for Coach Priest?
Coach Priest?
Yes, ma'am.
What specifically is being done to encourage more of our students at Boulter and HOG to participate in some of these athletic programs? Is someone going over to the school, some of the coaches going over, are the students being taken over maybe to see the programs in action, or what?
As far as any specific sport or...
Swimming. You've mentioned swimming, particularly tennis.
On tennis, both, our coach went over and visited, trying to get into the athletic period and introducing that to them. So that was good. And even swim, we went over and had, you know, Coach Petty went over at the end of last year, and actually at the start of this year, and trying to get kids interested. We had some, but then they just haven't been able to follow through on it, the kids. And it's, you know, I think they kind of tend to learn that it's, you know, it's competitive, and it's not just kind of getting in the pool. And so once they kind of figure that out, they kind of shy away. So, but we'll keep pressing and trying to get those kids involved, and, you know, it's important. We even offered it at John Tyler. We did not have any kids. We had one that actually swam at John Tyler this year, and he was there for a couple of weeks, and then it slowly, he just kind of eliminated himself.
I guess my thing is, you can't start at the high school level.
No, ma'am.
We have to begin actually elementary with our students. I realize this was back in the day, Coach Priest, but back in my day, tennis, we had tennis lessons in the summer as an elementary student. So that encouraged me to continue my tennis through middle school, and then in high school, you were able to let her in tennis. So maybe just even on some of our campuses, maybe we could work with encouraging our elementary students from across the city, just all around, with some type of summer program. The swimming, you know, I'm glad to see the classes, the elementary schools, I believe, who were involved in going for swimming lessons. I hope you will encourage other schools, select other schools to be involved and continue that, so that our athletic facility can be used more than just for our swimming teams, but other students will have a wonderful opportunity to see that great facility and use it.
Yes, ma'am. Well, and in regards to tennis, I think both of our, both programs offer summer tennis, and, you know, being able to get that out and being able to offer free clinics for kids that come up and play. So, you know, that is gonna be made available, and we just need to continue to get the word out. As far as the water safety, you know, this was the first year, a lot of schools are very hesitant to do it, and just fortunate enough, we had two schools that wanted to do it. And after seeing the results, a lot of schools are now willing to do that. So I think you're gonna see that grow, and we'll, and we want to do that. So I think you're gonna see a lot of schools next year.
Reverend Mason, thank you for the, what we used to call in the baseball world, the batting practice fastball, that you could really drive out of the park, because we've got a predicament in this nation, and it's all the way to the local level, about youth sports. And that's what you're really describing. When we grew up, you and I, you had Little League programs, you had Dixie League programs, you had Little Dribblers, you had flag football, tackle if your community chose that. Carthage didn't do that, but played flag. And it's taken a lot of the men and ladies who coached those teams out of being mentors to them. So there's the character development that I think is so, that was so prevalent in that era, that is tragically missing from our community. Not to mention the fact that it's hindering us. You can't just pick up a baseball or softball, your first day of school, your ninth... You can't just pick up a baseball or softball, your first day of school, your ninth grade year, and expect to be successful. So, Coach Priest and I have had some conversations about this over the last year, but really the last two weeks about, we've got to do something. And I don't see anyone in our community taking the, the lead on this, but we need to do that. And maybe we can, we are looking for a partner. We need to do something internal, inside the city of Tyler, inside of Tyler ISD to address some of those issues so that we can keep kids off the street, develop their character. And then it's going to be beneficial for us to be able to compete and win. Pretty pleased with the numbers that we've got as far as the outcomes goes, the winning. But I see deficiencies in there too, when Bolter Middle School has 800-plus kids and they don't have the same type of numbers that Moore, excuse me, Moore, Three Lakes and even Hubbard has as far as football goes. So, thank you for bringing that up. I know when you bring up things like that, it's, it's a sign of support as we go forward and it's a charge for us. So, I'm looking at Mr. Jones, I'm looking at Mr. Sanchez, I'm looking at Coach Priest, I'm looking at Gary Brown. I'm looking at Jared Bitter, whenever he's here. He's not here tonight. People like that are going to have to take over this. The local soft, Fast Pitch Softball League is not making this year. Am I right, Eckert's? That's sad. What in the world? We're in America. What kid doesn't play baseball or softball when they're growing up? Man, I mean, you're good at it, but at least you play. It teaches you a lot about life. So, we've, we've got to do something about that. And we're not blaming anyone, but that's a real problem and it is affecting our outcomes. We could be a lot better.
I know we can't, we, the district can't do it all. But it goes back to what we've talked about here at this board before. It's going to take some community organizations and some of our churches to step up and partner with the school district and sponsoring these young people and engaging them and helping the parents to understand the importance of athletics.
Yeah, absolutely. And again, you may not be the, the very best player or a good player at all, but it's good for you to be part of a team. And it's good for our kids to have a mentor. I still remember every, every kid, every, every guy coached me in Little League. I remember that. And anyway, so, thank you for, for bringing that up. And it gives us a good chance, a good segue to address that with you.
Mr. Priest?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question I'd like to ask. You've mentioned two elementary schools that students had come over for swim. How was those schools selected or are you going to go through and do this for every elementary school? Can you explain how that was done?
Yes, it, you know, it was offered to, well, the first thing we had to look at was kind of budget of, because, and really trying to coordinate a schedule and, and look at all the logistics of being able to get two kids to the pool. Ms. Hanson might be able to help me with that too, as far as how we, how it was selected.
Let me take that. I'll take the selection piece of that. So, both coordinators, we have a coordinator on, for some schools, Douglas P. Coach. Same thing at the Ri, at Rice as well. Those were the two schools, correct?
Yes.
So, those were good pilots to, good test cases. We knew they would be on board. We knew those principals would be on board as well. And so, they, we piloted with them. I think we're doing it a second round this spring. Is that correct? Yes, we are, but.
No, I don't, I don't think, I don't think, I think it starts next year.
It's, no, it, we, it's offered for this spring, but we haven't had any takers yet. So, in saying that, well, I know you're looking at me like that's crazy, but let's, let's think about this real quick. We've got instruction that we've got to take care of. And I know that, that, that our principals are really concerned about disrupting their instructional program. And even though it's, what grade did we send over?
We sent third graders.
Third graders over for a week. Second graders over for a week. That's, you know, that would be concerning to me as a principal as well. I'm making sure that that fits in there and, and that's an issue that we're going to have to overcome. I don't know how we're going to overcome that, but we're going to have to overcome that. Maybe a lot of our May programming can, can, can sustain some of that as well. But that, that's not just the swim center. It's, it's some of the other things that we do, that we need to take a hard look at to see where we can fit them in or quit doing some of the things that we've been doing that, that makes it awfully difficult on our principals to schedule throughout the year. So, that's, that's something that, that we need to look at. We just need to get a couple of takers for the spring. It's open. We're offering it. But again, it's instructional season, it's, it's also assessment season. So, anything that happens, we need to do similar to what we've done with Camp Tyler and make sure it's as least invasive of their time.
Maybe after testing.
That's what I'm saying.
Have a nice, nice week.
Possibly doing your May programming where you do a lot of field tripping. Some of those traditional things can happen.
Right, right.
So, we'll, we'll make sure we have that. We'll try to find those two takers since we've offered it and have not had anyone step forward yet, but it's early.
Thank you.
Hey, Coach. Oh, go for it, Trish. You got it.
I was looking at the numbers. I too am a little bit disappointed in the participation at Bolter and at, and at HOG. And I would just suggest in the focus of trying to get takers on the, on the offering, focus on, on HOG and Bolter. You know, just, just work on them.
Yes, ma'am. Well, if you, you're going to lose kids from, last year in football, you had 66. Or I guess at seventh grade, you had 46. We actually did increase that. We went from 46 to, you know, you only went up five, but we did, we did increase those. It's just the eighth grade numbers drop, you know. Last year, you had, well, I guess you had, at seventh grade, you had 46. You had a drop of 16 kids. You know, a lot of those kids aside, you know, football's, you know, they try it for a year. And then you're going to, you're going to lose some kids and you're going to continue to lose kids each year. When they get to their, you know, from eighth grade to their freshman year, you're going to lose some. And then you're going to lose some from ninth grade to JV and so on. So, our, our goal is to increase that number though.
Let me say it. Yeah, there's natural attrition everywhere, from your Highland Parks to your Lake Travis's. But when the coaches are on top of it.
Yes.
And when we're on top of it and when the principals are engaged in, in on top of it, they don't lose programming. So, I'm not going to sit here and talk about there's natural attrition. Because if we're doing our jobs and we're making it engaging and we're having success and we're winning, that takes care of a lot of things certainly. But man, having a good coach there that's going to lead them, that's going to put their arm around them. I'm just going, I'm telling the board right here, I mean, it, we have, that's no, it's no excuse that our numbers are that at Bolter. And so, in saying that, yes, we've got, it takes a combined effort to get everybody out. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
What, what happens if you add a program, right? So, then you have a kid in seventh grade playing football and then the next year, he decides he's just going to do cross country and not play football. So, so then how do you determine, you may not be losing them to a sport. You may be losing them to a sport. You know what I mean?
Correct. Yeah.
Yeah, and remember HOG, we changed programming over there. Man, we were struggling with numbers at HOG to where we couldn't even fill the, a team some years.
Yeah, around about 25.
Yeah, and that's just, that's, you're starting to get dangerous if you start playing middle school football with that, with those numbers. So, we still offer the opportunity for them to transfer over to play for their, not transfer over. I guess they could transfer over if they wanted.
We made it available to transfer, but then.
We also made available transportation.
And we trans, we transport kids. So, we have, I, I don't think we had anybody, most, I think there were seven kids that came over to Hubbard where it was space available.
So, so HOG's a little, certainly a different situation, Dr. Nation. But Bolter, again, there's no excuse with the amount of students that they have there. We, we staff them as we staff Three Lakes that has, have many more kids, more than they, than they have. So, we do, we just need to be right on how we staff it, who we staff it, and the things we have to energize that, that group. And I'm going to put a little onus on our high school coaches as well. You can't depend on superb, phenomenal athletes and sustain your program. And if you're not getting into the middle schools and you're not making appearances there and you're not going to the middle schools during the periods we've assigned you to go to the middle schools and working hard, not standing over there with your hands in your pocket or twirling your whistle, we're, we're going to have those type of numbers. So, in saying that, our charges to Coach Priest and, and our high school coaches to make sure that they're getting on the high school campuses. We've got the best structure in the state of Texas to be successful, not just in football, but in basketball and volleyball, softball, baseball, you name it, every sport we've got. And our coaches need to take adva, I'm standing at the dice today, staying at the dice today stating, our coaches need to take advantage of it. And they need to have professional development. They need to get better. Visiting other people and seeing what other folks are doing. We've had success here. We didn't just invent what we're doing. We visited people. We studied other people, what they're doing. So, the same thing needs to happen with our coaches. When you get in the middle schools, they need to see what other programs are doing to be successful and to get their numbers up. And we need to implement it in Tyler, Texas and quit getting beat by tradition.
Speaking of high school, middle school relationships, since we redrew the boundary lines for our middle schools and essentially have true feeders, I guess, have the coaches or anybody indicated some of the benefits of being able to integrate their systems at the middle school level. So, by the time they get to high school, how, how's that part going?
I think it's been very positive. And I, and our, you know, we, we for sure need to do better and, and continue to do better. But I think our coaches have done a good job this year. There's always room for improvement. But it's for sure benefits of being able to be at practices. You know, it's great seeing them at the games. And Dr. Crawford's right, you know, when you get there, you got to be able to, to be engaged with those students. But, but I, I think we have a lot that do. And I will say, there's room for improvement and we're addressing those things and, and, you know, so that, so we can get it going in the future. But, but yes, I mean, being able to implement those things. I mean, you're learning how to be a John Tyler Line or, or Red Raider, seventh grade. So, and, you know, the, if you go out, the Quick Cow looks the same, the, the warmups look the same, running the same place. So, so that's good. So, so we'll continue to see growth in that.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Coach Priest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Visual and performing arts update. Was that a mic drop, Coach Priest? Is that what that was?
You and Jimmy Buffett. We have Sandy Newton and we've had, we've talked about this the other day. Sandy's in her second year. There is no, hey, this is only my first year anymore for visual and performing arts. But certainly, VPA is an extremely important part of Tyler ISD. Even well before this board, or some members of this board, we made sure we took care of the arts. When people were cutting arts, we were adding. Our budget's pretty dang healthy, even though there's some in the audience that would like more of our budget to go towards visual and performing arts. We're still doing some pretty cool things in VPA and Sandy's a go-getter. She's had a good first year. We're in the middle of her second year. Ms. Newton?
Well, I would like to thank the board for allowing me to come and update you on what's happening in our robust programs for the visual and performing arts. I'd like to thank Greg Priest for the shout-out on the video. So, I have a video for you.
The notes, the positions, the everything, it's different from the encounter from the regular orchestra. It's like playing with professionals, but at a young age. And you can get led by a person who knows all this and it's fun. It's basically the same thing as orchestra. In the, orchestra and the math class are basically the same thing. Because you're working together to, in orchestra and in the math class. They both correlate with each other because they're basically the same thing. Except one of them, you play music and one of them, you write. Performing is all about pleasing the people with your music. And it's just such a good feeling when you made through night playing. And felt, you feel excited when I got in.
It's from actually a selfie. It's from Empire State Building. I recreated the, the guardrail on top of the Empire State Building with wire. And I drew like a body shot of me climbing the Empire State Building and then an idealized backdrop of like the New York skyline, but more, obviously it was very, it was very simplified. And it kind of like represented like how I like, would like to go back there, but I still enjoyed the time that I had in New York. So, Mr. Gomer was really like respectful of like the arts. And he probably, he talked about us, about some, some past experiences with artists around the world and like how, you know, difficult it is to kind of fully grasp the, the effect of an art piece. It was really nice to see. I like to do art in my free time. I have, you know, stuff it's due. And I also have art it's due. So, it's a lot of management. But I think I stay pretty well grounded. It's helped me kind of become a more mature person, I think.
The way we felt when we won, we were all over joy. To see that all of our hard work throughout the season to finally pay off, it was a great feeling. Everything works out as God's plan. I asked God for my position and I asked if it be in the cards for me, then let it be. And it was in the cards for me. He made the position mine. So, I see it only right that we give God the glory for the one that we got as well. Being a marching band has taught me time management. Being able to manage your time and being, going, traveling places and doing different things, being able to manage your time is very important. That way, you can keep up your school as well as keep up your marching band. Well, I would say being something that people can look up to, that seems to be something that I've strived to be. And being the head drum major that everyone looks at and seeing everybody look up to me or even having all eyes on me, it feels great to know that I'm an inspiration to someone else.
I want to be an opera singer. I really want to just, I mean, I've been singing since I was little and it just really makes me happy. And so, I don't know, I just want to do it for the rest of my life. Because, you know, school is really stressful and when you just get to come in here and you just get to sing with like all your friends, it's really great because you just get to be in the moment and you get to sing. And like all our voices really like meshed together. And we're basically like a big family, I feel like. We're very fortunate to have like a good choir director and a good program and people that actually want to be in the program and work hard to make it sound good.
Hi, I'm Lizzie Tucker and I am portraying Millie Dillmount in our production of Thoroughly Modern Millie. Basically, the show is about a girl who goes to New York City to reinvent herself and on the way, she finds love and discovers her new self. And it's just a wonderful show. And it was so much fun to do. Like, please come join theater because this department has changed my life so much. Like, it has helped me grow, become a better actress and also a better person just in knowing like myself and like just meeting all these wonderful people and the three amazing directors that we have here. And also, if you don't want to act, there are a lot of other opportunities that you can do. So, you can also do tech, which is like lights and sound. And you can also do makeup and costumes. Like, there's so many creative outlets here in theater that, you know, can apply to us students. So, I just think, yeah.
Again, thank you for letting me be here and update you. We do have exceptional programs here in Tyler ISD. And I could spend the whole evening talking to you about all the great things. It's a great passion of mine, but I've picked a few highlights in each area to tell you about. We started in elementary music, we initiated the District Honors Choir. Last year, in our first year, we had 40 members and they were from across all elementary campuses. This year, we have 80, we, and alternates, and every elementary campus is represented. So, that was a huge success. In the choir, we had all-region choir and honors choir, 32 all-region. Excuse me, I'm getting older. I have to take my glasses off to read this. We have 32 all-region and two honors choir members. In orchestra, we have all-region orchestra, 26 total students, 10 middle school students. And incidentally, we had three students from Bolter selected. And that's the first time in approximately 15 years we've had anyone from Bolter on the all-region orchestra. For band, of course, Robert Lee and JT both have Division One rankings for their marching in UIL. Ann Homer, All-State Jazz Ensemble, and you heard this evening, he will be performing in San Antonio. This is his second year. I know for sure that he's been a part of that All-State Ensemble, which is an incredible accomplishment. 30 middle school students made all-region band. In dance, we had our two students that were represented this evening who have, were invited to, to participate in the all-state dance compet, or the, all-state dance ensemble. In visual arts, we have, we had 94 entries. In visual arts, we have, we had 94 entries in scholastic art. That's about the same as last year, but the year before that, we only had 25. So that was, that's been a continued growth. For the MLK 2019 art contest, Tyler ISD had 235 entries. We had first place, second place and third place in the elementary division. And we took first place, second place and third place in the middle school division. We also had the first annual visual literacy art contest where we worked, fine arts worked in conjunction with secondary ELAR. And we developed a program where students were able to visually express themselves based on literature that they had read. That was their inspiration. And we went to the campuses today and awarded those prizes. In theater, we had some incredible performances. Of course Caldwell did James and the Giant Peach, which was an incredible production. Robert E. Lee did Thoroughly Modern Millie, The Man Who Came to Dinner, Stagehand Stardust Dinner. We had Willy Wonka. We had Aladdin Jr. We had a lot of really great performances. In the month of December alone, Tyler ISD visual performing arts programs put on 47 different presentations just in the month of December, which included Caldwell's Dance Showcase and Music Showcase. And that's just a few. We have incredible programs doing incredible things.
Mary Poppins.
Mary Poppins.
That was really good.
That was really, really good.
Lori Poppins.
You're so funny.
Let me start the comments or questions off. How, I can't say how proud we are of the John Tyler Band. Lee as well. It's the first time since 1985?
Thirty-four years.
Whatever, 34.
Great year in Tyler ISD, 1985.
Yeah, first time since 1985 that both high schools finished with a division one. Is it, was it sweepstakes?
It's not sweepstakes till they do.
Region or area or whatever. Okay, but division one rating. First time in 30 plus years that that happened. Kudos to Mr. Wade and his student drum majors for recognizing that those three ratings that we were getting at contests were not enough. And just pretty much saying that by golly enough's enough and we're gonna go ahead and change what we're doing all the way from who we're using to design our marching contest routine. That was a big deal. That's a big switch. We found somebody new. And it might've been uncomfortable in changing that person, but we changed them and sure enough, the results are there to go along. We had great comments from the judges in regard to the, to the actual design of the routine. Of course, it takes the students and the director and the student directors to make that work and execute that. So I really wanted to say that that's, that's a big deal from the superintendent's chair. You can tell. I'm making a big deal about that. So you almost, you know, you kinda go around and if you can't get a division one rating, you kinda hide. And so we've been to kinda having to hide John Tyler. But I'm sticking my chest out this year. That's a great, and we've had former band directors that are now former superintendents that called me to say congratulations. They just came out of the woodwork to say congratulations to John Tyler. And they know that I was proud for that. And I am. I'm not a band guy. But at the same time, I like to win and we like to put people in position to win. And Larry Wade and his students took, took care of that this year. So kudos to them again.
And that stretches beyond Tyler. It's all over Texas, you know. Tyler has quite the reputation for our arts programs. And when the marching band performs that well from both high schools, it reaches. So when I go to administrator meetings for fine arts, I hear congratulations. They were great.
Is debate a part of visual and performing arts or it comes under a different category?
That comes under competitive academics. Mr. Brown will be able to give you updates as appropriate. Of course, remember the seasons and you get, this is more of the, there's not much, there's not many outcomes in these presentations. This mid-year update, it's kind of a status update of where we're at. And then we get into the spring season and in July, you'll get more of your compilation of everything from athletics to fine arts to competitive academics and how we fared this year.
Well, thank both of you so much for supporting the arts. And, you know, Caldwell Dad, I've said it many a times, but I'm continually thankful and impressed by what goes on there. And since you've come on board, it's only gotten better. And I anticipate that they'll continue to try new and crazy and zany things. But the, the great thing about arts and athletics is, you know, aside from schoolwork, you're really getting to find like who you are as a person. And that's so important for developmental growth for kids. So giving them the access to do that, I wanna, I really want to say thank you and do everything we can to keep doing that. So keep it up.
Thank you.
On a related note, I wanted to say thanks to, for the support from the district on the musical. Specifically some hardware that went into the performance and the auditorium. I know there was a lot of work done the couple of weeks leading up to that, so I certainly want to thank you all for that. And then I guess would it be appropriate to ask for an update on just the auditorium? I know there was some transition over the holidays.
Oh, it's appropriate.
Yes. Caldwell Auditorium became a part of Caldwell Elementary School, which is a fitting location for considering all of the outstanding things that are happening on that campus. And I'm a Caldwell mom, so I think that was a good choice.
So the way the facility usage agreement used to run, work is that the auditorium was pretty much its own entity. And that it was managed from central office. The school side of things couldn't even have keys to get into it. Heck, I don't even have a key to get into it. Can you work on that loper? No, don't have a Caldwell Auditorium key. Just thought that was one of those things. Okay. So in saying that, Mr. Markle saw that there was this big giant space that during the day could have been used as a teaching facility. Just like all auditoriums are with principals and go, man, that space is a dark space. It's so many thousands of square feet of nothing being that used that space. So we've transitioned that over. The school now actually handles and manages the facility usage agreements. We have a calendar of what has traditionally been there throughout the years. It doesn't look like there's gonna be any interference there. So when you have A, B, C, X, Y, Z school of dance that needs to have it. If we have good relationships with them and they've been good stewards, we're gonna continue those relationships. Texas College Graduation, things like that. You know, we're not gonna do anything crazy Reverend Mason. But we are also gonna be a little bit tighter on how we manage that. We have specific guidelines of you must have things in by certain deadlines to make that happen. That was not always the case when we didn't operate it the way we were operating. We would, we would let some of our favorite people kinda slide on some deadlines and some payments. Got the payments in before they ever used it. So that's a good thing because we wouldn't let them do that. But we need to be a little bit more tighter than we've been. So Bobby's gonna help us on that. We're still gonna have some interaction and supervision of that. But now Caldwell is the, is the primary holder of all things facility usage over there so that they can actually use it in the benefit for themselves. We've also encouraged our other schools and thanks to our taxpayers, we now have cafeteriums at the three new middle schools. Both Lee and John Tyler, Lee has a great auditorium now. John Tyler's about to have a great auditorium here in the next two or three years. We're encouraging our elementaries and our, and our, and our middle schools to use those facilities also within their feeder pattern before they consider Caldwell so that we can free Caldwell up. So yes, glad you brought that up. And, and yeah, Caldwell Auditorium is next up on the list of things we need to consider on updating. No doubt about it. It's starting to age. It's a great old facility. We argue about when it was built. Thing was built in the 40s. But it, it's something that we need to take a look at because it's, it's historical Tyler and it's, it's a facility we already have.
Yeah. Thanks for bringing that up, Erin, because I think about that quite often. And I know when we get these reports, we think about everything functioning at the most optimal level it could possibly function at, you know, whether it be athletics or VPA. However, when Caldwell Auditorium, in my mind, is functioning at an optimal level, downtown Tyler is benefiting, benefiting from it and flourishing because of it. I'm talking about hosting really good acts, you know, that come in. I've, I've seen that place full and everybody goes and stays downtown. And that's so good for Tyler and I think it's such a good way for us to contribute to the city economically and, and through the arts. And so I would really like to see kinda some ideas for that, you know, and I know we will sooner or later. But, you know, I think about the people who have played on that stage over time coming through town and I think that's kinda been lost. But when kids get to perform on a stage where probably Elvis came through, you know, or some really, really good, BB King, Willie Nelson. Lyle Lovett, I was there. But you know, they're, they're sharing that stage with greats, you know. And it would be really neat to have a Caldwell Auditorium Hall of Fame when you enter so you can see all the greats that have played there and so the kids can see that. I've always thought in that side wing, it'd look really cool.
I think it's a great idea.
Anyway.
You know, I think a great fundraiser for young audiences, a night with Willie at Caldwell. Maureen, Amy. KLTV with in-kind advertising.
Better do it.
Stacy out there.
Better do it sooner rather than later.
We better get on that pretty quick.
Thank you.
When other, other school districts may be decreasing, providing funds for visual and performing arts, I am proud that our school district sees the necessity because a well-rounded student is important. And research, plenty of research is available for students who are in the visual and performing arts. And I would go on to say even students who participate in athletics. So I just think it's wonderful and I, it is, it's my prayer, we'll continue to do great things here at Tyler.
I'm very proud of Tyler and I'm very proud of Tyler ISD. And when I get to go and represent the school district and talk about the wonderful things that are happening here, I'm very proud of where I'm from.
Me too.
So thank you for your support.
Me too.
We're all proud. Okay, any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. Mr. Brown, competitive academics.
So as Mr. Brown's walking up, competition is competition. And all students need to find their niche. And one thing that we have, I think, ramped up over the last few years, especially since Mr. Brown has taken over. And that is our competitive academic program. And it's not just about competing in academics. There is an end game to this. We want our students to be able to compete in academics. But we also think that those rock star and superstar, excuse me, students that are out there that may not be thinking about Tyler ISD or that are currently here will have an avenue to compete in a very rigorous way. So much that the skills that they learn in competitive academics and build can also help them potentially achieve great, greater things like national achievement and scholars and things that we, that are unimaginable. So appreciate Mr. Brown and what he's done. He's here to present the mid-year competitive academic update.
Thank you, Dr. Crawford. A good evening, board members, and appreciate the opportunity to share some information. Dr. Crawford mentioned earlier that the seasons sometimes overlap. But as far as competitive academics, the actual outcomes and results are gonna be very heavy this semester in the spring. So when I come back to you in the summer in July and look at all the spring outcomes, there'll be a lot more information on placing and winning. But there are several that we would like to highlight. Just a purpose, I just put a couple of slides here and I'll tell you, mine's a little more old school. I do have a brief video, but it's just gonna be more presentation. And certainly we'll answer questions anywhere along the way. But academic competitions boost the confidence and the morale of the students while challenging them to give their best effort. And we know just that process that students go through is very valuable. The students participating in academic competition helps to motivate them, promotes diversity and instills the value of working hard to excel in something. Obviously, we want to see students be very successful, successful student outcomes being a cornerstone. But just the process of working hard and seeing the outcome that you can have, that's a very part, important part of competitive academics. Just a few fall events, and this is gonna focus on the fall semester of competitive things our students are involved in. At the middle school level, on, on October 13th, we had the Hispanic Heritage Knowledge Bowl. And I believe this was the first annual, I'm not 100% sure. I didn't want to put it on the slide and give you some inaccurate information, but I do believe that it was. It was sponsored by the Hispanic Professionals Association of Tyler. The master ceremony was Uncle Attorney Nick Vicina. And you can see there's a couple of photographs there of the students that were participating. We had nine teams competing from all five middle schools at this event. The teams consisted of four individuals each. There was one team from Henderson and I'm not exactly sure how the Henderson team ended up here, but, but there was one additional team. And Moore Middle School won this particular competition. So that was something that occurred in the fall. So we had roughly 40 students participating in that event. UIL Regional Congressional Debate, this is a, this is a continuing and we actually had the culminating state event in January. So this is gonna be a crossover a little bit. When I had to submit this report, we hadn't quite got all the information together. It was held at Stephen F. Austin State University in November. And this is a team from Robert E. Lee High School. And just a couple of highlights at the regional level, which this event is completely concluded now. The, the top three places at the regional competition advanced to state congress. And Robert E. Lee took five students to the regional event. All five students placed in the top six, places one, two, three, four and six. So we took the top three and alternate to the state UIL Congress that was held in January. Olivia Orin, which is pictured there on the right there with her medal, was actually the, the gold medal winner at the regional competition. I'll talk a little bit more about the state when we get, we get into competition, we get into January. These two are, are out of chronological sequence because I do have a video for the next one. But Tyler ISD Innovation Inventions Fair that was held at Caldwell Arts Academy, December 7th for gifted students in grades four and five. Basically the students learn about the processes of innovation, creative thinking and invention through, they come up with original ideas and come up with something that's practical and feasible. And there's another part of the competition that's called Contraption Construction. And that's where the, it's basically drawings, but they take it just a simple task and work together as a team and come up with a way to complete that task, which is a lot of teamwork involved in this as well. We had 131 students in the district in grades four and five competing in this event. So it was a lot of participation. Students won awards in seven areas. Those are notebook and research, peer choice, prototype performance, benefit to mankind, innovative design, effective display. And then ultimately there was an overall winner for, for most points scored in all areas. And then our robotics competition was actually held the preceding evening at Griffin Elementary School. We had approximately 140 students participating from the elementary schools. As well as this year, there was, there was a middle school component added. We had teams winning at the elementary level from Dixie Elementary, Owens Elementary. There were two teams from Griffins, Griffin Elementary that placed. Rice Elementary had three teams in the robotics competition that placed. And then at the middle school level, Caldwell Arts Academy team placed and Moore Middle School had two teams that placed at the event. There's actually a little brief video if we want to show.
Welcome. This is the third annual robotics competition in Tyler ISD showcase. Thank you for taking the time out to attend this event. We greatly appreciate it.
I'm competing for today to win the trophy from robotics because I like to compete and, and I love to like have fun with other people and know other people.
It's a huge project-based learning experience. So we started with surveying teachers and principals about what should be included in our zoo. And so they took ideas from that and decided which ones they wanted to use and which ones we, they couldn't do. And they also did research on zoos and animals. And then they got to use a lot of creativity and create different habitats for their animals based off their research. It really gives the kids enriching opportunities and things that they wouldn't normally get to participate in. This is something extra.
We're bidding for the awards and we're hoping we would get, we will get a high score. Like first place or second place.
Events like these really build STEM, which is science, technology, engineering and math. Basically these events and the robotics competition and clubs basically lets students get a little bit of some problem solving skills built in and they're able to. get a little bit of some problem-solving skills built in and they're able to kind of do things on the fly. They also get some experience with programming and having to adjust a program based on a, a change.
Teamwork is really important because if people are arguing with each other, nothing is going to work out. Because if one person is saying, do this, do that, nothing is going to be working. So with everyone cooperating, you get more work done and everything just gets done faster and smoother.
And I would, I would be remiss if I didn't mention our advanced audiovisual students. They actually filmed from, from Technology Center, filmed the, the event and helped produce and put that together. So Mr. Itches, I think several of the videos they've been involved in, in the production of. And so that was a fall event. The, the spring, and I'm just going to, going to go through these, I'm certainly not going to hit all of these points, very, very heavy competition, particularly in UL academics in the spring. So I just, I've kind of got this listed out here by month. Just wanted to briefly go back to January 7th and 9th. That is when the state congress event was held in Austin, and that's where I said the five students advan, excuse me, three advanced and an alternate to the, to the event. And the way that's set up, basically, if you're, if you're familiar with UL congress, it's very much like a legislative session. Students write legislate, legislature, they, they have bills, they debate bills to pass, to fail. It's just, it's a three and a half hour session of congress is what it amounts to. And they're judged on based on their writing skills, their speaking skills, and their debating skills in that event. And so in the, in the semifinal round, we had two of the three students advance to the final state round that's actually held at the Capitol in Austin. And so we're very, very proud of that students, the best, and this is as far back as we could check that we've, that we ever had two students advance to the final round, and they finished in the top two in the state. So did a tremendous job in that. We actually had, if anyone ever wonders are alternates important, the alternate from Stephen F. Austin actually, the alternate goes to the competition and due to an illness of one of our participating team mentors, members participated in the semifinal round, did so well, was one of the two that advanced to the state round. So went from regional alternate to state finalist through competition. The other one I just would mention here is that we had John Tyler competing in a monologue event at SMU in the regional competition and had six students that qualified for that event. So that was another one that was held recently. And I'll have more information in details because that's really a spring event. I just wanted to kind of highlight that. When we get into February, this is where our elementary and middle school UL academic meets will be held. So if you'll notice on the February 9th, we have split this year elementary UL academics into two separate meets. We have enough schools participating now, so we'll have one district meet held at Bell Elementary, and then we'll have another on the same day district meet held at Rice Elementary. The top three schools from each one of those meets then will advance to a district-wide UL meet. So they'll actually get two competitions that they'll be able to do, will be able to go up to that next level. The middle school students competing from all of the middle schools, this year the meet will be held at Belter Middle School on February 16th. And then I've sprinkled in some practice meets in here. Those are not the actual UL high school meets. Then when you get into the month of March, and I, once again, I'm just giving a very brief overview, I put one act play on here, Ms. Newton, and I, I spoke of this briefly. This is certainly belongs in visual and performing arts. I included it just in this. It's generally considered part of competitive academics. You can earn points toward the Lone Star Cup and UL one act play, so I wanted to include it in here for plays that do advance all the way to the regional level and then advance to state, there are points that can be awarded. So if you look at the schedule, the July, March 26th, excuse me, John Tyler's UL district academic meet will be held here in Tyler, at Tyler Junior College for the entire district for 16 5A, and then 11 6A meet, Robert, Robert E. Lee will be traveling to Rockwall High School for their academic meet. And once again, district champions in UL academics can, do receive Lone Star Cup points. I just wanted to mention that because I, I saw Coach Priest speaking about it earlier. Moving to April, and, and so really March is the heavy, heavy month. We're going to have a lot of, that's the culminating event for the elementaries as well as the district meets for UL at high school. For students and teams that advance, then we'll, we'll get into the regional meets. The 5A meet is at Prosper High School, so John Tyler students will have an opportunity to move that direction. The 6A regional meet is at Baylor University. Robert E. Lee students advancing will be able to go to Wake Forest and compete there. And once again, I mentioned the regional one act play because if, if you advance out of regional and one act play, you do get a Lone Star Cup points. And then the month of May, of course, that's a big testing month at the high school level. We had AP testing, EOC testing, SAT, a little bit of everything. So the state academic meet at the University of Texas at Austin, for those that do advance at that point, is held at the very beginning of May, and then Lincoln Douglas Debate is held at the very end of May, kind of surrounding those. And just a reminder that, that all of these events, events that are just outlined, the results we'll share in July.
Questions or comments from the board for Mr. Brown?
Mr. Brown, you've accepted the challenges that we posed to you and several years ago and doing a great job, and I appreciate that. I was especially interested in debate because I was in debate in high school, and I'm glad you wouldn't believe that one.
No, shocker.
I know, I know. You'd be surprised how that prepares you in life. And I'm excited to see students who are participating in that, as well as the congressional, whatever it was you said, yes.
All of the speaking events, the oratory events, those are fantastic preparation as far as leadership skills, presentation skills. I agree.
Usually they, you cannot visit, is that the same thing? You would not be able to sit in the audience to hear any?
There are some of the events that you can.
Oh, really?
As an audience member, a lot of the ones that are individual events, they do not allow audience to, to be present, but there are some of these.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
We now move to item number 11, which is the time for public participation. Skip the introduction on the law, of the policies we have towards that. Hopefully we don't have any issues tonight. First up, we have, we have two speakers tonight. Ms. Gloria Washington, you are up and you have as long, as much as five minutes.
Thank you so very much, TISD school board. And yes, you got another Mrs. Washington here. This is my sister-in-law. And I would just like to congratulate you all on board appreciation day today. You all are doing such a wonderful job. And I'm Gloria Washington, and I am here on behalf of the Texas African-American Museum here in Tyler, Texas. And guess what? We're located in one of your past schools, Mamie Griffin Elementary School, the old, the former school. And on yesterday, we had a recognition for Mrs. Ali May Crawford, who was also an instructor for the Tyler Independent School District and art teacher. But what I'm here tonight is to do, is to invite you all to come out to the Texas African-American Museum. We are located, as I said, in the Mamie Griffin old building, 3,000 North Border Avenue. And we know that Black History Month is coming up next month in February, and we know that a lot of times black history is only talked about in the month of February where we have many, many, many different activities. And so we would like to ask TISD if they would allow or try and implement students coming to the museum on field trips to tour the museum. We have a lot of history that's in the museum, and education is all around us. It's not just in the classroom, it's all around us. And we would love to see the children come out and share some of the history that we have at the Texas African-American Museum. And we are non-profit, 501(c)(3), and we are under the auspice of empowerment, community development cooperation here in Tyler, Texas as well. Our president is here tonight, Mr. Stanley Kofler, he's here tonight with us. So we're looking for collaboration with Tyler Independent School District. We know that you all would just love to have those kids come out and visit with us. And we service age groups. We've had some six-years-olds to come in and, but they have to be chaperoned by their parents up until whatever age. If you're 65 and over, 80-plus, you can come out and visit the Texas African-American Museum. And it's, we have a lot of information out there. Willie Neil Johnson, we have educational material on him. We have other different artifacts that's out there in the museum dating back to 1856, 1854, 1800s, 1900s, and we have the International Sewing Machine Museum. And we also have implemented the STEM project. And we know what the STEM project is, right? Science, technology, education, and math. And we have also implemented stream with, as the reading and the art to it as well. So we want all of our children to come out and be prepared and learn what we have here in the city of Tyler, Texas, where we have persevered through challenges and hardships. And we all know what hardships are all about. I sat here and listened to some of the speakers here tonight. It didn't just throw it out 100%. You had to grow to 100%. So this is what we are doing. We want to involve the community, we want to involve Tyler ISD in what we're doing as far as making our underprivileged, underserved area a little bit better. So with that, come on out, and I would love to talk to you, Dr. Crawford, to see what we could do, okay? Any questions? Oh, one other thing. Have you all decided what you're going to do with Dogan? Anyone have any dibs on it yet?
So I'd remind the speaker that this is not an opportunity to interact with the board. You can.
I just thought I'd throw that in there. But just come by and visit with us, and if you can, implement the tour, the field trips with the students, just let us know. Our address is Post Office Box 131301, Tyler, Texas, and you can reach me at 903-283-6089. Thank you.
Thank you, the other Mrs. Washington. Next up is Mr. Bob Brewer.
Well, hopefully I'll have good news for you tonight. On January 18th, our president proclaimed January 20th through 26th as National School Choice Week, School Choice Week. In it, he expressed a comparative concern with international students, where the U.S. ranks 24th in reading, 25th in science, and 40th in math. He calls these the consequences of a largely one-size-fits-all approach to education, suggesting that this style does not inspire wonder, stimulate curiosity, or inspire a left, a lifelong desire to learn and grow. He encouraged families to explore new educational opportunities, and he challenges students to passionately pursue their goals and dreams with discipline, integrity, and unyielding determination. And lastly, encourages lawmakers in states to expand educational choice. I suggest one way to do this is to perhaps recapture an education lost. I'd like to give an example of this by retelling a Supreme Court decision and an opinion delivered by Justice Joseph Story in Vital versus Girard. Girard was a Frenchman who offered to donate over $200 million to the city of Philadelphia with the one stipulate, to build an orphanage on a school with the one stipulation that no religion be allowed. City lawyers rejected the $200 million plan as repugnant to law. If moral principles are to be taught, where are they found? They continue, the lawyers continue, there is an obligation to teach what the Bible alone can teach, a pure system of morality. Story's majority opinion, and we cannot overlook states that, and we cannot overlook the blessings which such men by their conduct and instructions must impart to their youthful principles, pupils. Why may not the Bible without note or comment be read and taught, its general precepts expounded and its glorious principles of morality inculcated? Where can the purest principles of morality be learned so perfectly? Where are benevolence, the love of truth, sobriety, and industry so profound, so powerfully and irresistibly inculcated as in the sacred volume? Fortunately, in Texas, since 2007, we can recapture some of this wisdom from the greatest of the great books with a TAEA authorized classes on the Old and New Testaments. Currently, there are no classes being taught in Smith County, but there are in Kilgore and other cities to the east, since many of the families I know are incurring the cost to send their children to schools that can freely teach the Bible or not. Perhaps enlightening TISD families that this option to study the Bible for elective credit will stem some private school transfers. Who knows? It might even boost morale, better behavior, and promote higher performance in Tyler and Smith County schools. In anticipation of Constitution Week, I have one question for you, and that is, why should we keep the government shut down? And here's part of the history lesson. At the, at the time of our founding, the preeminent problem, the preeminent problem our founders faced was security. So they passed Article IV, Section IV, which states with seven words, thou protect each of them against invasion. Since all of our legislators swore an oath to defend the Constitution, and they are ignoring the only written guarantee in the Constitution, which is to protect states from invasion, I say we, I say they keep it closed so they don't pass any more laws that they will disobey or ignore. So anyway.
Five seconds.
That's a possibility for a topic. Oh, and here's your textbook for the Bible in public schools.
That concludes your time. Thank you very much. Oh, gosh. That is annoying. The sound, the alarm was annoying, not anything else. Okay, next item on the agenda is item 12. We have a request to pull items B and D. Any other items to be pulled?
No other items to be pulled. I will acknowledge Pat Stacy from KLTV, we're having an action offer, item E, that, that an agreement with the local news station that will benefit our students as well.
Any questions or comments? Okay, none, I'll accept a motion for AC and E.
To prove I'm here tonight, I'll make a motion that we approve items A, C, and E.
It's good to hear your voice, Mr. Bergfeld. Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Deutsch, Mr. Stacy.
And item B, then, Dr. Crawford?
Gifts approve, or considerable approval of gifts and donations on page 22 of your packet. If you can scroll to that on the overhead. We have three donations tonight that we'd like to present to the board. It's kind of repetitive here in Tyler, but it is a great community that we live in that philanthropic-minded people go out and provide their own time and their own funds and efforts and energy to give back to our students to maybe things that, that we don't cover in the general budget. Tonight, we have $7,500 from the Tyler Robert E. Lee Dugout Club, Inc., okay, or Incorporated, to go to the Robert E. Lee High School baseball program. We have $10,000 from the Caldwell Arts Alliance to go to the Caldwell Arts Academy, and over $12,000, nearly $13,000, $12,945.15 from Three Lakes Middle School PTA to Three Lakes Middle School for their use. So a pretty large chunk of change there for the board to consider at three different schools.
Yes, it's very generous. Any questions or comments?
Thank you.
I would like to say that as an adult, since I've come back to Tyler, you know, I grew up here, but I came back, and it wasn't until I was an adult that I realized how benevolent of a place that it actually is and how that is such a large part of Tyler culture is giving, and it makes me appreciate where we live. And, you know, we couldn't do what we do, like Orenthe was saying earlier, in athletics and everywhere else, but especially academics too, without help, without help from parents and clubs and other organizations. So thank you.
Okay, I'll accept a motion for item B to accept these gifts.
I move we accept these gifts.
Thank you, Mr. Washman. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Reverend Mason. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item D, Dr. Crawford?
Item D is the proposed 2019, 2020 calendar, excuse me. Item D is the proposed 2019-2020 calendar, excuse me. We went over this at the workshop.
This is abatement.
We're on a abatement.
Um, excuse me, excuse me. We're on an asbestos-
We only wish we had gotten all the way to calendars.
I know. So, Mr. Loper and Mr. Beddingfield, I asked to pull this asbestos item so we can talk about that just, and I want you to be brief on the asbestos item. But as it relates to John Tyler High School, I wanted to be able to maybe make some comments about how vertical things are going at John Tyler High School, and maybe where this asbestos plan fits into the construction over at John Tyler High School now that we are going structural over there.
It's a great question.
Okay.
And it's very integral to the schedule that we have at John Tyler. And the asbestos abatement that you have before you at both campuses is to help us expedite the final dates of move-in. So we're staying ahead of the construction companies during the summer to abate the floor tile and so they don't have to wait on us once they get to those areas to remodel. And yes, we are going vertical. And this will also help us to move into those new campuses or the new additions that we're doing on time as we've promised. So it's a continuation of what we did at both campuses. It's quite larger at both campuses as far as the quantity of the abatements. And just for example, at John Tyler, we're doing the A and the B wing. So that's upstairs, downstairs, right through the middle. So it'll be challenging, but we can do it, and we will do it.
And once you abate that, then you'll wind up having some concrete floors. We can make those shine.
We do make them shine, and in a lot of cases-
And a lot better than that old-school, old 1980s VCT that we've got down there.
Yeah, a lot of cases, it looks better.
Yeah. So just wanted to give you all a little update there under a board agenda item that we're very proud that our, our building, our, excuse me, our construction manager at risk has done a great job of fighting this weather. It has been a wet fall. And here comes, here we go. We've been promising it, here it is.
So they're, they're moving along, moving very good. Anybody that wants to drive by the loop, they're gonna, they're gonna see steel going up right now. We're putting beams in. They're just making a lot of headway over at John Tyler and at Robert E. Lee also. So we're excited.
Thank you.
Mr. Loper, can I hear the words? We are on track and, and within budget. I just love the sound of that.
We are on schedule and within budget.
Thank you very much, sir. That makes my night. Okay, so then I would accept a motion for Item D, the asbestos agreement, abatement agreement.
I move that we approve Item D.
Thank you, Dr. Nation. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bergfeld. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 13A. Now we're at the calendar.
You know, it's, I just tend to forget some things because it's so fun for super-tenths to do calendars. Because, you know, you have community members that have different expectations of your calendar. You have students that have different expectations of your calendar. You have teachers that have different expectations of your calendar. And you actually have trustees that have different expectations of your calendar. So it's really fun putting this thing together. And I want to say kudos to Mr. Jones and the Calendar Committee for working on this with some curveballs that have been thrown to us over time from the state. Flashback to the District of Innovation and the committees that were the, excuse me, the DOI committee that put this together as far as the school's start time or the, the date in which we start. State law says that you begin, you're supposed to begin the last Monday in August. That's the earliest that you could begin. But if your DOI exempts that and the board adopts that, then you can actually start anytime you want to. You want to start August 1st, you can start August 1st. But we're just not going to do that. For one, we've, we've, we've talked to our local Chamber of Commerce, who, who back in the mid-2000s, I think partnered with the Texas Association of Business and the tourism industry to set that uniform start date. But as contractual days have grown, as instructional days have grown, what TAB failed to realize was that if you started in late August, you also missed one of the most experienced week, three-day weekends in Texas, and that is Memorial Day weekend. And so this calendar does achieve that goal that our teachers asked for, that the students are actually out of school by Memorial Day, as they are going to be this year as well. That was a big win. So I'll just go down the highlights one more time, then y'all can ask the questions. We do start in August. We had some teachers coming back August 8th and 9th. And then we actually have a full week of professional development convocation. We'll try to make that happen on August the 16th, if we do a convocation. That's always a, a question we always ask internally as the district. Do we need a convocation this year? We'll do that then. There's been some questions about that. Teachers and administrators sometimes fail to remember that we are not bound by instructional days or minutes. We're on contract days. And we have actual contract days that we have to fulfill, that we, that we are compensated for. And we need to work those com, those contract days, or it's a gift of public funds. The only time that, that can happen is it has to be board-approved. So this schedule is as tight as we possibly can make it as far as a teacher's contract days go. And that was distracting, sorry. But in saying that, I think that's been a question that came up on the survey of why do we need to start this, at this point? And why do we end when we end? If students don't have to make up days, why do we have to make up days? I'm pretty sure that we would like to make up those days because we like to be compensated for the days of our contract. If we shorten the contract days, we do not get compensated for those days. So I know a lot of teachers have those concerns. Maybe not a lot. A few at least answered the survey had, had some of those questions. So as we roll through September, we have Labor Day weekend. As, as we go into October, we have a Green Day there, which is a professional development day. Golly. The professional development day there, we, we offered the teachers and even talked to professional development, do we really need that day? And our teachers came back to us and said, yes, that is a day that they like to look at data from that first six weeks and kind of recalibrate their instruction, see where we need to help students. And that gives them, it's a pretty good window right in there to do that. Traditionally, that early to mid-October PD Day was in observance of Columbus Day because the banks were closed and a lot of businesses were closed. Well, we're open for business during that time. November, Thanksgiving Week is actually the very last week of November. So that means we'll have a three-week window between Thanksgiving and Christmas as opposed to a four-week window this year when Thanksgiving was so early. We'll get into December. We do have some makeup testing there for those that have not been successful on the EOC. That's that yellow. And we actually have an early release day on the 20th. Christmas is on the 25th. We come back January the 6th. So yes, 16 days, principals, and you can relay that to your teachers. Not 15, but 16 days of Christmas break. And because of where Christmas falls, there's no reason to take the entire week off. Usually when, if it falls on that weekend, you wa, you wind up taking the entire week off prior to. So I think our teacher, we had good feedback this year that we, that our teachers felt refreshed and invigorated for having the back end of New Year's to recover and in the first day. Some of our teachers have asked for a, we need to get ready for students coming back on January 6th day of work. I don't particularly see a need for that as a superintendent. We've had 16 days off, and we're ready to roll. We, and again, it goes back to contract days and instructional days. That's just another day that pushes the goal of getting out before Memorial Day, past Memorial Day. February is a long month. We'll go through there after we've taken Martin Luther King Day, Martin Luther King Day off on January 20th. That's a pretty late date for MLK Day. March, we get into 2020. There's spring break in the second week. I will tell the board, if you do choose to advise this, we're going to go back and talk to our local universities about where they think spring break could land as well. The reason spring break's been traditionally observed in the second week by school systems across Texas is because of state testing. Now that they've taken state testing out of March and put everything in April and May, we may not have to take spring break so early. So we realize we had, and we had some comments about this. We realize that we have students who may have siblings that are attending university, and they may have spring breaks coordinated with their parents as well. So we, we're going to kind of look around and see where SFA's taking theirs, when UT's taking theirs, when A&amp;M's taking theirs as well. And we may adjust that week. Per board policy, once adopted, the ca, if the calendar can be, the calendar can be adjusted by the superintendent if there's a bona fide reason. That is something that we're going to take a look at and may have adjustment. We'll know that within the next week or two, if we're going to move that week. Okay, and we'll make sure that we communicate that with y'all. But again, we want to make sure we look at all the universities across the state and, and be, you know, customer-friendly to our parents who may have older siblings attending schools that may have their spring break a little deeper. Baylor Bears like to take their spring break during that month, or during that week right there, because that's before the Aggies and the Longhorns do it, because we can't go to Padre with them, apparently, because-
And you think that the, the parents are going to want to go to Padre with their college kids? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm just saying that there may be college kids that steal spring break with their parents.
Oh.
Maybe. So you're not out of jail yet, Mr. Bergfeld. Here we go. April, this is a, this is a pretty important highlight right here. So April 6th through the 10th, that's a, or 7th through the 10th, that's a testing week. That opens up spring testing. Does anyone know what April 10th is?
Is that Good Friday?
Good Friday. There is no diamond or circle or miscoloration there because we've been kind of waiting on whether or not we were going to have to take that day or not. But the state has come back, and it looks like there's going to be some flexibility there to where we can actually move those testing days to the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and actually have Good Friday off. Remember, I made a commitment to y'all that we would not risk bad weather days on Good Friday, that we were going to take Good Friday off. And then the state came and made a very important day right there as far as accountability goes. So we were really panicking about this at the board workshop. Talked about that a little bit, and here we are as far as that goes. So it looks like we're going to be able to take Good Friday off. And we'll make sure, once we get the final notification of that, we'll, we'll send that out to our community and to the board as well. May, a lot of testing in there. There is a, a triangle for an early release day, just like there was before we get out for Christmas, on May 21st. We do have a professional development day on the 22nd. And we're rolling out this year for the first time, the district-wide safety conference.
Just be mindful that when, when we do get Good Friday, that shifts. All of that pushes back a day.
The testing.
The convocation, everything.
Oh, correct. The release date and everything. Yeah, yeah. So actually, we go this direction?
Yeah.
Okay.
Towards June.
Students are still getting out before Memorial Day?
Correct.
Okay.
That would be the 22nd.
And so we do have professional development, again, the safety-wide con, district-wide safety conference this year, and we're planning for one next year as well. Where we'll gather all teachers to go and, and teaching assistants to go through some safety training and experiences as well. And that was another concern of, of, of one person's. Why do we have to have two district-wide convocations? Because we called it district-wide convocation. We put it on there. Well, convocation's at the first of the year. Y'all know what convocation is. At the end of the year, it's a training. It's a safety conference. And, and as we have ramped up some efforts here, you'll hear more about it here in the presentation here, we want to make sure that we're getting everyone together in the same room to hear the same stuff. Right now, that's virtually impossible unless we do it the very first of the year, and that's just not a good way to start off. So we'll get a little training in. And then June's pretty free and clear. One thing I will say, are the graduations listed on here?
Yes, very top.
Very top. May 13th, 14th, 15th, and 16th is graduation week. We did discuss with our teaching staff that they felt like it's a good week to go ahead, a good idea to go ahead and get the seniors off campus so that we can conduct finals with all of the underclassmen because the seniors have checked out anyways. And so we have enough instructional minutes to, to get that accomplished. The one thing I do, will, I will say is we are going to start grad, we graduate one each night during that week, and it does start on a Wednesday. So Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Rise First, Rise Early College, and then the two high schools alternate Friday and Saturday. We might can look at that, Reverend Mason, for a Tuesday, but certainly to keep Wednesday night clear. But we are going to try to pull that off till we have four different graduation nights.
Is that the first early college?
This year is actually the first early college. Is that right, Raleigh? Okay, that's correct. That'll be the second that we're looking at. Sir?
They'll get both diplomas at the same time.
Both diplomas at the same time. One from TJC and one from Tyler ISD. Kudos to Dr. Medke upon his retirement, since that came up, for being a great partner with Tyler ISD and his, and leading his staff and making sure we could have that happen for early college this year and years to come. Any questions on the calendar for Mr. Jones?
Hearing none, then you're, you want us to take action on this tonight and approve the calendar?
Yeah, as long as we've publicly stated, there may be an adjustment on that spring break, and that we'll make sure to notify everyone on that spring break within the next two weeks, hopefully early in the next two weeks, once we get some survey data back. And then once we scope out everybody else's, and that Good Friday. We have to, we have to wait until we get official notification from the state for that Good Friday.
So are we going to post this as a tentative calendar? You know, I mean, on the website and everything like that?
Yeah, we're going to leave it up as draft, even though y'all are going to adopt it tonight.
Yeah.
And then we will make the adjustment and firm it up under those premises. If y'all have an issue with that, we can wait. But that's, whatever you want to do on that. And then, and again, on the Good Friday thing, remember why that last testing day is so important. It's a makeup day. So there's really three days of assessment that's going on there. Yeah, we could risk not having that fourth day. I think the district could eat some of those non-testers. In other words, if they don't get them tested because we took that day off. But I, I hate to jeopardize a campus, campuses academic rating because we took away a testing opportunity day for them. That might mean the difference between an A and a B, a B and a C, or a C and a D. So in saying that, we need all four of those days. And I'm glad the state's going to work with a community that still values the observance of religious holidays.
Okay, if there's no other questions or comments, then I would accept a motion on approval of the calendar submitted with the caveats that Dr. Crawford has mentioned.
I so moved.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. A second? Thank you, Reverend Mason. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item B.
We also have the Wayne D. Boaschir Center Calendar. Again, it's a, it's a little, it's different. It's modified. It's, it's the same amount of instructional days, but they are spread out over a, over a different model, an annual calendar. And sometimes when we talk about a year-wide, year-round school, we're not talking about more instructional days, and we're not in the situation. So Dr. Hanson, do you have anything to add on Boaschir's? Or maybe Mr. Sanchez about the Boaschir's calendar? Dr. George would-
No.
Yes, ma'am?
If we make any adjustments on Good Friday, then you would like an option to have two training.
Okay. So we had kind of talked earlier, Ms. Parker and I, the director at Boaschir's, the principal, about what they would actually do on that Good Friday if we actually came as a district. So they'd had a plan for that. If, if we wind up taking Good Friday off like we anticipate, we will, we will do the same thing at Boaschir's.
Any questions or comments on Boaschir's calendar? If not, I'll accept a motion for approval.
Move we approve the Boaschir's calendar.
Mr. Washman, a second? Thank you, Reverend Mason. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Oh, y'all, wait. You want to talk about it? Or do you want to just, it's a consent?
Yeah, so any questions or comments about Item C?
A move we approve Item C.
A second for that? Okay, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Superintendent Staff Report, Safety and Security.
Yeah, Mr. Sanchez is going to come up here to the, to the podium, and I think Chief Brown's going to also join him, and Leanne Barber, our Director of Counseling also as well. So Police Chief, Assistant Superintendent Schools, and Leanne Barber. We have a lot of safety, security, and social mo- of safety, security, and social-emotional learning in their shop. So I'm going to turn it over to them. Mr. Sanchez?
Thank you, Dr. Crawford. Good evening, School Board, Reverend Hagan President, Vice President Wade Washman. We realize this meeting is long, but we really do appreciate you all this evening, though the length of it may not reflect that, but we really, really do appreciate y'all. We, like Mr. Priest and Ms. Newton, also have videos for you all this evening. So without further ado, we will play the video.
My name is Danny Brown. I'm the Police Chief for Tyler Independent School District. The Police Department at Tyler I S D, our responsibility is to keep all the students and faculty safe while they're at work, and getting an education. We are on the campus every day. I have officers at the high schools and the middle schools, and each one of those officers are assigned to an elementary school. We travel from the middle schools to the elementary schools regularly to check on them. I have, currently have four officers at both high schools, and two of those are regular S R O officers, and two of them are tactical officers. The School Resource Officer's job is to interact with students on a daily basis, get to know them, mentor those children, those students as they, you know, on a daily basis, they see them every day. Also, a part of it is teaching. We teach, we try to instruct them on how to interact with law enforcement outside the, you know, the campus atmosphere. The School Resource Officers that are in the blue uniform, they are, they're taking the daily reports that we normally take, and the tactical guys are more responsible for being out and about, checking doors, checking the properties, and just being more visible, so that if anyone tries to come on campuses that shouldn't be here, that they're out and about to see that and try to stop that before they get on our campus. Our focus this year is more on making sure that we don't have, you know, people on campus that shouldn't be here. We're really concentrating this year to make sure that things are, you know, as safe as they can be, and all of our safety measures are in place that we have at T I S D.
Tyler I S D Safe Schools is focused on creating a closer, more connected, and inclusive schools. This year, we have implemented a social and emotional program called the Sandy Hook Promise. This program is focused on helping schools reach out and say hello to others, and teach people how important it is to belong. We began this program with Start With Hello Week, September 24th through the 28th. We kicked off our Hello Week with a low hall, all dressed in Hawaiian attire. A different activity was emphasized during the week. Monday, our theme was Give Hives and High Fives to Everyone You See. Tuesday's theme was Encourage Everyone. Students created Post-it note walls and encouraging statements. Wednesday's theme was Learn the Names of Other Students by Meeting New People and Asking Their Names. Thursday's theme was Look for People Who You Need, and Sit Next to People Who You May Not Know at Lunch, and Make a New Friend. Friday's theme was Own It. Make it Your Job to Smile and Be Friendly. This was such a fun week. All of our secondary students have continued with the kindness and Start With Hello Week by creating Save Promise Clubs. These clubs have been named many different names. Some are Kindness Club, some are the Happy Club, and some are the Just Belong Club. Also, the week of November 26th through the 30th, presenters from the Sandy Hook Promise came and presented to all of our secondary students on the importance of including others and making the people feel like they belong. Other programs we are currently implementing that build social and emotional awareness include these that you currently see on the screen. The first component of the Sandy Hook Promise has been very successful. We look forward to implementing the second portion, which is the Say Something Program, which teaches students to stand up and say something when they see someone who is in distress or need, to reach out to a trusted adult. Research shows when students have a sense of belonging, they are less likely to feel isolated, withdrawn, and are academically more successful.
And so those are just two of the programs that fall under the responsibility of ensuring that kids have an opportunity to go to school, that they're safe, and teachers have an opportunity to teach. And so we know and realize that if a kid doesn't feel safe, then there's going to be a barrier for their ability to learn, and at the same time, teachers have a hindrance to be able to teach. And so we're very thankful that the board has afforded us the opportunity and the means to be able to hire the additional officers, as well as the resources out of the Counseling Department, to provide kids the social-emotional learning that is so needed in our society today. And we realize and understand that at times, you know, it's not about, you know, it's sad to say that it's not if it's going to happen, but when it's going to happen, and that we have things in place to prevent it, and if it does, and when it does happen, that we have things in place to be able to protect our children, to protect our teachers, and to protect everybody that's in our buildings. And so with that, I'm going to give you an overview of some of the school security measures that we've already taken in place, as well as some additional things that we will deal in this school year. So in our buildings, we have cameras, and these are some additional cameras that we are in the process of and have already completed at some of our schools. You'll see there at Birdwell, we've added an additional 17 cameras. At HOG, we've added an additional two cameras, Hubbard three, Bolter seven, Moore six, Three Lakes four, and we've also adjusted some of the cameras at the Administration Building, so that we can better protect the number-one person in that building, and that's Ms. Hubbard. And so we had to make some adjustments to that camera, to make sure that she was, that she was being taken care of, and that we could, the camera angle could, we could make sure that that was well, well taken care of. Some other, some older cameras that we're going to be, need to take care of are going to be at Clarkson, Jones, Boisier's, and Woods. Okay, some of the other safety measures that we are, we've already put P O's in for, and in the process of working, is going to be at Caldwell. The entrance of Caldwell, as you know, you can just walk in off the street there, there's going to, we're going to re-put the doors on. If you, those y'all that were here before, there used to be doors there, there was an air phone there, so we're going to put those systems back in place, so that when people come in, they're going to have to, you know, it's a visual, they can see them, and they can hear them before they're buzzed in. And so they also has a camera, so they can be seen. So if you look at that picture on the right, my right, your left, I guess, from where you're sitting, that's the office, so they're going to be able to see them very easily as well. Okay? Over at HOG, HOG has already started the renovation of this fence here, this montage. If you see that black fence of the first picture up there, we've actually pushed that back towards the parking lot, and there where you see that on, and the black fence goes all the way down to the street. And Mr. Wade, what street is that again? Didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Fannin?
Sorry. Which, the one, the one... Yes, sir. Yes, sir. North and South?
Yes, North and South. Fannin?
That's Fannin. Fannin. So that fence will go, then we'll go down to the steps there that come off of Fannin, it'll go all the way there, there'll be a gate there. And this is similar to what, the fence that we have over at Hubbard, where it is remote, you have to have your I D. to get in and your I D. to get out. And so that's what's going to be good about this one. Also, the picked, two pictures on your right, we will redo that area this summer, so that we're not impeding the instruction that goes on at that campus. Where you see those brown doors, basically, it will be yet another set of brown doors that will be in front of those, and then there, to the left, we will cut in a spot there, and that's where people will need to check in and be allowed to be buzzed in. So that's where that area is there. And then you'll see that front office. All that will be adjusted as well, to ensure that that area is safe, because HOG also, you can just walk in the front door, and there's nothing, there's nothing there to stop anybody from walking in. This, the one on the left is D A E P. There at D A E P, again, that front office, you can just walk in the front office, and you have immediate access to the secretary or the administrative assistant. And so right there where that bench is at, right above that, we're going to cut out a window, and so people will have to walk up to that window, be buzzed in before they can even get into the building. And to the left of where that bench is at, or where that door is at, you have to have your card reader, it's a card reader there, that's the only way that you can access, you can gain access into that building. So that's a deal where, you know, you can check in, but, you know, you can never check out, kind of a deal. We want to make sure that that's happening in all of our campuses. Okay? And that is our safety, security update. We also want to make note that May 28th, we will have a district-wide safety and security conference, where we will have all of our teachers and paraprofessionals at our campuses go through a safety, security update, and what to do in the event that something happens. And so we'll be prepared. We are trying to partner with some, with Tyler Police, as well as D P S and our Smith County Sheriffs, to do that, some of that training. So we've, we've been meeting for months now with that. We're also trying to reach out to some other organizations to come in and provide us some training around the safety, and to make sure that our schools are safe, our kids are safe, and our teachers can teach. I'd like to thank Chief Brown and Ms. Leanne Barber for their contributions to this PowerPoint presentation, as they did most of it. Questions?
Questions or comments for any of the panelists? So I know there's some working groups that the district has spun up that are looking at several of these issues. Can you give us an update on the status of those working groups?
So those groups meet periodically to review some of the things that you have seen here, and then they give us recommendations. The one that is most active right now, which is the one we believe is most important, is a social-emotional learning component. The other one, the other ones is about technology. The other one is hardening, is basically personnel. And so those are the ones that, you know, are, they're working all the time, but the one that meets frequently is going to be the Social-Emotional Learning Committee.
So there's not a particular date where they're going to report out something? This is just kind of an ongoing effort, where as they make recommendations for enhancements, then those are considered and then brought to...
I'll answer that. We have the board calendar, this is one of those months, so we will plug one of those in, where we actually have an opportunity to give updates on all of those. And the other one is Policy and Procedures. So we'll have, again, a more robust opportunity here in the coming months, quarterly, to provide updates to the board on safety and security.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on this item? Future business, 15?
Board Workshop, February 7th. It's not too far away. Regular meeting, February 18th. And May 4th, 2019, School Trustees' election for single-member District 1, 3, and 6. Per tradition, we annually start announcing those types of things at this meeting, and we'll have to call an order of election on, at the board workshop. Okay? So the board workshop, where we will actually call the election.
Okay, let's go ahead and read some meetings from Executive Session. We do have a quorum present, looks like our other two members will be joining us. Is there a motion to be made?
I move that we give Board President Fritz Hager the authority to finalize Marty Crawford's contract renewal for the upcoming year.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. And then I'll...
Then, may I be adjourned?
Yes, thank you. Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Stand adjourned. Thank you.